It didn't come on. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 13th, 2022, Laguna Beach Unified School Board's Regular Business Meeting. It is 6:07 PM and our open session portion of the meeting is called order. We established warm while we were opened and closed session for closed session. Next is the Pledge Allegiance, which Nick will lead us.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. There's no report out of closed session. Let's see how kind of speaks about. We're vivid for D adoption of the agenda. Dr. Flora, there are any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we need to pull 10A, the approval of the memorandum of understanding with Orange County Social Services. They requested to change their MOU. So we were ready to move forward, but they have asked us to pull it back because they have some edits to make to their actual MOU. So so hopefully bring it back another time.
Thank you. For members, can I have a motion as second to adopt tonight's agenda as amended without 10? Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero to adopt the agenda. We're moving to five A public comment on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. LBSD public comment forum closed today at noon, and there were no comments. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on five A?
And no comment cards received. Thank you.
Then we'll move on to item six, reports. Just a quick procedural reminder, and since we still have any students, a public comment. There's no public comment on reports per open meeting law for members of the public. Listening, if you want to address any of the concerns or questions that might arise while listening to the reports, please email the person who's speaking as our district employees or experts in their field. So you can best answer your questions. At the end of the report section, we'll make sure we have any board member questions addressed then. And this takes us to student board members. And I know Zoe's not here yet from tennis, but Nick, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So starting off with Elmore, the team is focusing on the learning experience and also emphasizing social emotional skills this year. This involves teaching students problem solving skills and how to be independent and self sufficient. The after school programming at Elmore is now in full effect, and it has been since September. And actually, both elementary schools have about 50% of their students enrolled in the after school programs, programs in some way. And on the safety front, Elmore was partnered with our safety committee chairs and engaging professional training from emergency management safety partners. Moving on to TOW, they had their big Bonanza event last Friday. They had their student of the month assembly, and overall, they've just been promoting positive culture in students and faculty. In the classroom front, parent teacher conferences and some field trips are happening as well. The TOW pals program is also in full effect, which is basically just a leadership opportunity for fourth and fifth grade students where they volunteer during school events. And like Elmore, TOW's after school programming is also in full effect. And like I said, their attendance is pretty much the same. And lastly, teachers and staff are still in training for a sort of practices. We've gone to TMS. They've had their first home games for their sports program, which includes boys volleyball and girls basketball. PTA was extremely helpful with both games, providing snack trucks, face painting and raffles. Students and staff were also very supportive to their athletes as they attended both games and both games were both very successful. The counseling program is also thriving and counselors are helping students identify and build off of their personal strengths at Thurston and also beyond. The counselors did this by having all sixth grade students complete the Navion's Strength Explorer test in late September. And then they followed up in early October with lessons involving crucial skills like time management and test taking strategies. Counselors have also been doing one on one meetings with all students throughout October, and they'll continue doing that throughout the end of the month. Moving on to LBHS, the student body is absolutely thriving. Sports games have continued having great turnouts and homecoming dance, which was actually on October 1st, also had a great turnout. Dr. Allman, funny enough, said that this was actually one of the best turnouts we've had since even before COVID. And moving into November, we'll have our flow week. Flow stands for fire, land, ocean and water. And each class will represent one of those four. Talks will be held throughout flow week by engaging guest speakers in order to build environmental awareness among LBHS students. And lastly, all of the club presidents from around campus had a meeting recently, which was a great way to unite all of the clubs that have different ideas just under one umbrella. On the academic front, the new cell phone policy is still delivering. Students are engaged in maximizing their experience in the classroom. And I already testing is also starting back up again in order to paint a better picture of where students are at in math and ELA. This is also a great opportunity to deliver any additional support to students that need it. And students are also adjusting to their workload, and by now they've had a nice routine for themselves. And then on the college and career front, our lovely counselors, Mrs. Gregory and Mrs. Tacklin have been killing it. We've had a ton of college visits from all over the country, and these have been super informative, and they help clear out what college is and the kind of college experience that students should be looking for. I've been to a lot of these events myself, and I've actually noticed a lot of underclassmen at these events. So it's really amazing to see that students are getting a head start into college admissions. This is also the first year for seniors where the free application for federal student aid is a graduation requirement. That's the FAFSA. And the CAC, CCC has also adjusted to this beautifully by presenting to all seniors about how they can get a head start. Thank you.
Thank you for being our liaison for all students, and we appreciate the time we put into your reports. So we're moving to six B. There are no reports from our bargaining units this evening. And on to six C, where Officer Ashley Croten, oh, there you are. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. During lunchtime, I met with the student council and we, they decorated the SRO car, and it was great because it was a different group from last year. Not a single one of the kids that participated, participated last year, and it's always a fun way for them to, to kind of chat with us. I brought some different officers with us, and they did a great job learning the difference between vandalism graffiti and just having fun. So that was a good turnout. And then we showcased the car for a little bit over at Bonanza, and that was a great turnout. It was a lot more fun than last year. Sorry, Julie. It Megan had a great turnout. So so far she's doing great over there. On Tuesday of this week, on the 11th, Fred and one of our drug recognition experts attended a training. They hosted a training at Thurston for some staff members, and that's just was on the latest of drug and substance abuse trends right now, which the focus has obviously been on fentanyl. And hopefully, we can continue pushing out education, but so far the response from the community has been very helpful, and they are on board with everything that we are working on as well. On Monday, we are going to be meeting at TOW for Digital Citizenship Week. And just a reminder for everyone to have those conversations in the classroom and at home about the agreement that every student, every family signed when utilizing their, their district issued Chromebooks. Remember, everything's being monitored. That includes us. We are checking on it too. So let's avoid those unnecessary conversations and, and help them with, you know, be curious, but be cautious. Friday, we are going to, October 21st, we're going to be at the high school and we'll be conducting similar drug talks, but tailored more for obviously the ninth and 10th graders. And just, just having real conversation with them, trying to bring in some more drug recognition experts as well. Later that evening, or sorry, the afternoon is an assembly at Elmore. So we're looking forward to that. I don't know if it's the character counts, but we're going to have our Halloween safety chat with them, and that is a lively bunch. And we're going to have a special guest appearance by Lieutenant Cornelius Ashton. So if you're around, come on, because you can't help but smile when he joins us. Friday, October 28th, Elmore will be there for, for your boo blast. And instead of having the student council decorate the car, riddle it everybody. So parents are welcome. They loved it last year. All of you as well. Please come out, sign and destroy the car for us that evening. Unfortunately, there's not a football game, so Fred won't get to showcase it that evening, but it will be driven around town all weekend. We've had approximately 90 students who've taken the e-bike safety course. Our next class is Wednesday, October 19th. Yes, yes. Fred's been doing a great job with that from our partners at Irvine PD, who have kind of helped provide the, the curriculum for it, and it's been well received. We've also noticed a drastic improvement in comparison to last year with e-bike related incidents. Personally, I am enjoying the less frequent emails with videos of kids riding their bikes in town. So good job to everybody for that one. It's finally clicking. And hopefully, when the next wave of e-bikes come in from, from Santa Claus and for birthday presents, that continues the trend that everyone listens. So. We're going to be very, very busy. Shop with a cop is coming up too. We're planning that in December. So thank you to school power for helping us out this year and also the district for, for identifying families who are privileged enough for this. So. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I know the board appreciates your regular reports. Thank you. This moves us to six D Superintendent Dr. Flora, you have the floor.
All right, we're going to do a quick update. You know, it's, it's October 13th, but we wanted to provide just a general update of where we're at with a little bit of a truncated version of the presentation we provided the PTA. What is not included in here are the school site updates because the school principals will be giving their updates to the board. I think beginning at the next meeting, I recall. So we didn't want to take away any of their thunder. November meeting would be, yes, the next regular business meeting. So. So with that, just a quick general update of where things are at. One, just nice to see our students getting back into kind of the normal, what we consider normal. It's our new normal, I think. But we're very excited. This year has been probably the best start I've experienced as superintendent. And I know the staff feel, and we heard it again from our LaBuca leadership team just this week, how grateful they were at the start of the year, how excited they were around the professional development. It's not often you continue to hear about professional development that they did in August, in October. So you know, it had a lasting impact, and they're still talking about it and are still grateful. So we really appreciate that feedback from them, and it really does give us an opportunity as we're looking forward with our staff PD to look at models that worked. And this clearly was a, an approach and model that worked. So kudos to the team for that. As you know, you know, our, our vision and mission have remained steadfast, and I really appreciate the board's focus on our commitments that have been commitments for the last really six years. So these have really guided us through. We're really guiding us through the pandemic and will continue to guide us moving forward. And those are every student, every day, relationships matter and our continuous improvement efforts. Our district wide goals, Chad will mention these a little bit more in his section, but these are the LCAP goals. Developing college career readiness skills, fostering social emotional competencies and self identity, and ensuring safe and equitable and inclusive schools. These really guide our work. These guide our school sites work as well, and it helps really tie everything together in our very small but mighty school district to have all of us working towards the same goal. So again, appreciate the board's focus, our LCAP committees work, our student group work as well, really helping us develop these and help us keep these as priorities and in front of us every day. Our current enrollment, I know line, the TV, sorry, I'll read them off to you. Elmore's, this was as of nine one. Elmore is at about 419 students. High school is about 929. Thurston's about 540 and TOW is at 560. We are down below the 2,500 mark. As mentioned previously to the board, the kindergarten numbers really are lower than we were expecting. But they do coincide with the low birth rate, really the lowest birth rate, live birth rate we've seen in Laguna Beach in many, many years. I don't think on the chart it had a number lower than what we saw for the current kindergarten class. And unfortunately, the class, the groups behind this that are coming to us in the near future aren't much bigger in terms of the library. So as we know, we'll continue to do our work and as we look to expand into offering, you know, expanded TK and potential preschool options. We'll continue to try to serve as many of our students as we can. Yes, it's pretty substantial. It was, I was just up at the administrators association. The statewide group was meeting, and that was definitely a topic of conversation that the, the state as a whole is in a major decline in enrollment. And you know, the state, unlike for us, where most everybody else is ADA, it's based off of enrollment. That really is a challenge for school districts to see such a precipitous drop in the number of students that they're serving. And it's odd to hear a school district that's maintaining and are growing. Very odd. They are the ones that are in a very different position than most other districts. So we're grateful that, one, we've been good stewards of money. Again, thanks to the board for that and Jeff and the business office and the budgeting that we do on behalf of our students, continuing to make sure that we can provide the high quality education that we can. And as we continue to get smaller, we'll continue to have, you know, discussions and decisions about what we're going to continue to do to try to make that happen on behalf of our students. So. They are not at 12. That Elmore, they're about 16, I think, is the average right now there. And we have off the top of my head at TOW, they're about 19, 18, 19.
Jeff. Okay. So as the board knows, our operating budget is healthy this year. It's about $80 million. A good portion of that is restricted funds as a result of the COVID-19 relief dollars that are carrying over, although it's been dwindling. And instruction and IT have done a great job sticking to the plans on those expenses. And you can see that even with the influx of those restricted funds, the general expenditure layout that we have there, based on that pie chart, is exactly what we've seen in the past. About 75% goes to personnel costs and the rest for operations and services. When you look at our reserves, which is a real highlight, is we've done a really good job, thanks to the board's support and the board policy 3001 on maintaining what we would consider appropriate reserve levels, which is about half of our operating budget based on what we would be funded at if we were no longer a community funded district. So we were right on track with our operating budget this year and the required reserve to be considered 100% funded at the community funded differential. As far as sustainability, it's a real exciting year for us in that regard. As you know, we have our task force with our first meeting next week. Where we've been also putting in a lot of time into establishing what we're calling our baseline data for the year. And this is information that's going to help us establish criteria and the metrics that we can use to meet the board's goals established with resolution 22 dash 04 to really put forth our best effort to be carbon neutral by 2030. So we're really excited. And again, thanks to the board for our partnership with Green Schools National Network, and there's going to be a lot more reported on this throughout the year. So this is just the beginning of a very exciting project for us. As we get into facilities, Mr. Zade and his team did a fantastic job this summer. And as you go around our school sites, we're always impressed with the great work that they do. But what I'd really like to highlight is not just the, the new construction that you see, especially the four CLE learning environments with the libraries and the classrooms that we were able to work with Mike Morrison and IT with facilities together. Also, the infrastructure projects and the roofing, but most importantly is staying on track with the deep cleanings and, and the extent of the, the large filtration change outs that we do now. As a result of COVID, as the board recalls, we added a lot of new air filtration devices at all of our campuses. They are still there, and we are still maintaining them per the manufacturer's recommendation, which is changing those filters out often. So great job to Ryan and his team, and I'll with that turn it over to Mr. Conlon for HR.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Yeah, as we've shared, very busy season going back to March, April with hiring, so 50 plus new employees. So we've updated the video. You saw it a few meetings back, but we have got a few more faces that were brought on in, in between. So roll the tape.
Thank you. I will, I'll go next. As you see, the three goals are up here, as Dr. Flora mentioned earlier, just a few things I wanted to highlight. There's obviously a lot of things we're working on, and this is just a highlight of them. But ones that really stand out is we're, you know, as we're still coming out of the pandemic, it's something, the recovery, the intervention, all the, all the support. That's, it's something that's going to take years to, to work on. And so the MTSS or our systems of support has been a high priority, continues to be. We've added more staff there. We've added more co-teaching opportunities, we're training more, pushing more teachers into support students, finding more ways to do interventions during the school day. So that has been a high priority. Well, that continues to look at different ways. Our summer learning program was as large as it's ever been. So that has continued to expand. We have our ELO, ELOP program, which is after school. And some summer camps that we're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club to extend that school day for our most needed students. And then really looking through some of the career education, like we're really trying to emphasize the, the relevancy and the authentic part of the learning experience, which means we're work based learning and finding different ways to connect students to, to the world of work. We've added our new TK classroom of a TOW. So that's been really exciting, having that up there, both elementaries now. And then again, just looking a little bit at goal two and three, we're doing some work around our graduate profile coming out of the pandemic. I'll talk about this in the next slide, but just really thinking through what's really most important after going through such a challenging time. I appreciate the board's support and priority of small classes during the pandemic. And as we continue forward, we have some of the smallest class sizes in case, special education caseload ratios of anywhere around. And so, and counselors now too, that has helped. So the work we're doing with counselors making a huge difference, lowering those ratios down. So our staff can work with smaller and smaller groups of students to provide them that very personalized support. But then we've continued to do a lot of work around restorative practices. That's been a high priority for our schools to be training teachers around that. That is ongoing. As well as the equity work that we started a little bit over a year and a half ago, really expanding what we were doing and looking at self assessing. So that, that work, the sites are continuing to work on that, that piece as well. And then this year, we're looking to, to expand now that we're kind of getting back more opportunities to be on campus and with people in person, expanding our parent and family engagement opportunities, which was a lot more challenging when we were socially distancing. So those are some of the, some highlights that are in there. If you, if you go to the next slide, which I just did, the, this highlights some of the work that we started last year with our LCAP advisory around graduate profile. And so we've run it, we're still doing a lot of different feedback loops, getting feedback from, especially from students right now. Mike Morrison and I were, have gone out to the school sites to talk to all the staff to get, so we've met with all four schools at this point. And a big thank you to Mike Morrison, who's really partnered on a lot of our professional learning and opportunities for staff. And in this case, also the graduate profile with the instructional services and, and tech and technology department. The graduate profile was really about looking at what are, what are these outcomes we want for students, right? What do we want them? And then what is learning experiences we want for our students? How do you help ensure that happens? And then what are the conditions that we need to have? And so really looking over at the, the type of learning experiences, what's really, people are talking about a lot is wanting more authentic experiences and relevance experiences. They want them to be inclusive, somewhat open, so kids can access them in different ways, personalized as much as possible, right? So meeting them where they're at, their interests, and then more competency or skill base. So this has been a really big piece of the work we've done in the summer and now heading into the fall. We'll continue to be working on this and getting more feedback from students who are going to be a big partners in this. We want them to, along with the adults, to be, have these common priorities and kind of a north star for the work that we're doing. With that, I'm going to hand it off to some of other district leadership to talk about some of that upcoming work that we're doing in their areas.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Keller. I'm the Director of Social Emotional Support, and I just want to share some highlights of the areas of the work that we're doing. You know, the work that we do in instructional services is vast, and it's the direct instruction in classrooms, but it's really about creating the health and wellness systems of support for all students. I think Nick did a really nice job of summarizing some of the great work that happened that we're doing in the departments. I was so happy to hear you share some of that information in your board report. But we have a team of really incredible professionals that directly serve students. And with, with the board support, we've added two additional school counselors to support our students in the, one at the middle school, one at the high school. We now have really the lowest ratios, I think, of any public school that I know of around. So really proud of that. And what that means, why that's important is that we can have really personalized connections with every student. All students are going to have personalized goals for, in the middle school and the high school level, personal, personal connections with their, their school based counseling staff. They're going to be using tools like Navions, we're bringing back for middle school and high school to really help with that college career and life readiness goals that students will be setting. So really proud of that work. We've got the school counselor team together over the summer to do some planning, and they've really mapped out just incredible work in the area of academics, personal, social and college and career readiness. And we've done some learning locks this year, which was really the first time we've ever had an opportunity to do that. So we're having our whole K-12 team of counselors and social emotional support staff walk campuses together, learn about the intervention systems and how we can partner vertically to support students through the full progression of TK through 12th grade education. And of course, I just want to highlight also our school nurses, a part of the, part of this team, and they've just done incredible work throughout the pandemic. They still are working to try to mitigate those, those issues around the pandemic. Yes, it's still here. And, but we want to focus our time and effort on supporting students to thrive in school. One last thing before I turn it over to Mr. Morrison, is I just want to highlight, we're bringing back the parent project, which is a really strong evidence based program. If we have an elementary and a high school cohort, our principals have shared out some information for families to register. It's a, it's a 30 hour parent education program to really help parents to work with children who, who may have challenging behaviors or have difficulties and really help to have better parent child outcomes. So that's starting in early November, and we're going to run another cohort in the spring. So excited about that, that coming up. All right. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Morrison.
All right. So we've talked a lot about four CLE, but I just wanted to give you a couple of highlights on what we did this summer and what we're up to next. So these are some of the rooms that we worked on in the summer. At Elmore, we worked on first and second grade, and we worked on the libraries at both elementary schools. So, and we worked carefully with Ryan Z and Ryan Zeta and business and facilities, and the rooms turned out fantastic. If you have a chance to go visit them, you should. And the libraries are really beautiful too. So I think it's a great space. One of the things we did is we realized we need to kind of collect data on what happened over the last eight years because we only have one more level left to do, which is Elmore kindergarten. And we'll be pretty much done with a few stragglers here and there with the whole district. And so we, we built a comprehensive survey. We've only distributed to Thurston teachers, but I have some preliminary results to, to talk to you about. And I thought it might be interesting to hear. 92% of those teachers said that they, their room expressed something about themselves. And we really tried to make that happen in the process because the process is them making decisions about their room, like what Like what, what they're going to use the room for, ultimately how it's going to be flexible and how it's going to suit, you know, fulfill their learning outcomes. And 78% said they were interested in outdoor spaces, utilizing them better, which fits in with our goals, which one of our ideas is to really do some research on outdoor spaces and think about them. And then we asked them what top two features they liked the most. The first was audiovisual, they loved the audiovisual in the rooms. And the second was a tie between the audio amplification and the whiteboard walls. Those are the features they liked, so for Thurston teachers. So this year, we're going to be, like I said, we're already going to be meeting with the top of the, Elmore K. Top of the World K is in the process of being installed right now. So that'll happen this, in October and March, through October and March. And I think that's about it for ForCELE, anything else, Jeff? So I thought I'll show you this video and then we'll kind of talk through it. But this is, this is our elevator pitch for teachers to sign up for unit design. And I think you're going to like it.
So the unit that I'm redeveloping is on rates and proportions. So using this idea of cost per gallon of gas compared to purchase of an electric vehicle and the cost to charge that. The great thing about this unit is I've given a lot of student freedom and choice. They get to research their own vehicles, and I think that giving them that freedom will really increase engagement and buy into the, to the project.
So the unit development's been great on so many levels, because I got together with the social studies teachers and the English teachers to talk about how we could implement the flow program, which is our high school program, across all of our curriculums. And we all had different ideas, and so we're generating those ideas and putting them together. I love that the final project is always going to be something that the kids have come up with, and that's what T3 is all about. And then the edge of protocols help us find little ways to connect the kids and start getting the information to them. It's been so nice having the hands-on opportunity to create.
This unit redesign workshop is a really good opportunity to dive deeper into things that we don't often have the time to sit down and do. And so having this designated space with other staff members to bounce ideas off of, as well as the district's resources that they provide, kind of at our disposal, to be able to sit down and really think about the units from start to finish and bring in that, that essential question of what is it that we're trying to communicate to the kids? And what real-world problems are we trying to make sure that we have them explore the, the possible solutions? And, and then convey that and communicate that to their peers as, as well as their teachers. One aspect is the digital aquarium, where you have the students' main characters from their stories come to life using coding. And they get so excited. I remember when the kids first came in and saw the aquarium projected on the screen, just to see their character pop up and swim around, make them light up. And so I'm looking forward to connecting that to my narrative writing unit and having some of them, if they wish, code their own stories and, and be able to put their voice in and, and bring their characters to life.
So I've worked in education for over 30 years, and I feel like Dr. Valoria has assembled the best team that I've ever worked with. And it, and it's been great, because this project really is a team effort. This was instruction and IT and business, everybody worked together to kind of get this rolling. In the summer, we had 31 teachers go through this program, and you saw the variety of K-12 teachers. And we have 51 teachers signed up for this fall to go through this process of redesigning a unit. And some of the units are already happening, and we're getting great feedback. We, we kind of worked a survey that matches challenge success survey. So we're going to be able to compare some of our results for the unit to challenge success. So we're excited about that process. And, and then we're going to do it again in spring, and we'll have some in the summer too, some of this design work. And what's really paying off is that teachers are taking these ideas and putting them into their other units too. So it's not just one unit that we're redesigning, I think we're changing the way that they teach. It's exciting, thank you.
I didn't want to say Mike, somehow you end up with all the exciting stuff. Thank you, good evening. I appreciate you allowing me to join you tonight. I'm Betsy Canenberg, I'm the Director of Assessment and Accountability, and I have the privilege of sharing with you some of our district-wide highlights from last year. To start us off, college and career readiness remains a top priority for all students in LBUSD. And our 2022 spring data indicates that our high school students continue to excel academically and engage in career exploration through CTE courses aligned to numerous industry sectors. In 2022, our A to G rate, our A to G rates, AP pass rates, and AP participation rates increased from the prior year. Our high school graduation rate remained steady at over 98%. Those students who did not meet the requirements for traditional diplomas were able to earn a special education certificate of completion. As we've discussed over the course of the past year, our instructional teams continue to use formative and diagnostic assessments to better understand our students' specific strengths and needs in literacy and math in real time. iReady is one tool that provides specific actionable data two to three times per year to identify kindergarten through 10th grade students who may benefit from additional academic interventions and support, and to track the progress of all students in proficiency in meeting grade level standards and expectations. Our spring 2022 end-of-year data showed an increase of 3% in reading and 7% in math when compared to the previous year, and looking at the number of students performing within to above grade level, also known as our Tier 1 band. A benefit of administering the iReady assessment multiple times per year is that we are able to identify and monitor students who may need supplemental and intensive supports beyond the core classroom instruction. Learning recovery and acceleration following disrupted learning attributed to the global pandemic were priority areas for all of our schools last year. Through personalized learning, targeted instruction, and individual student goal setting, our LBUSD teaching and support staff were able to reduce the number of students performing significantly below grade level, eligible for Tier 3 interventions, by 4% to 8% over the course of the year. We will continue to pay particular attention to our significant student groups. Those are students who are English learners, students receiving special education services, and students from economically disadvantaged homes, many of whom evidence a need greater than our general student population. And we will consider them when we are developing and implementing additional academic supports. This is my favorite slide to share with you. Nationwide, between 6 to 7 million K8 students across the United States participated in iReady diagnostic testing in spring 2022, with approximately 1 million students assessed in California alone. The high participant, the high participation rate affords us the opportunity to compare the performance of our K8 LBUSD students to the performance of the state and national student sample. With 80% of our K8 students performing within the Tier 1 ELA level and 77% working within to above grade level in math, LBUSD performance was significantly higher than both the state and national average, including this column that you see here on the left, which is actually the pre-pandemic data from the administration in spring 2019. We will continue to address the specific and unique unfinished learning needs of our students identified within the yellow and red performance bands who ended the year below grade level in reading and math. Our district commitment to serving every student every day continues to emphasize growth for every student. And collectively, our instructional teams will strive to increase the Tier 1 green bands and to reduce the students identified within the Tier 3 red bands. So when we bring this slide up again at the end of the year, the goal will always be to increase our green tiers and to reduce our red tiers. Spring 2022 was an exciting time for us, as we saw both the elimination of mask mandates and the return of state standardized testing, which the students were really thrilled about. Students in grades 3 through 8 and 11 participated in the CASP, which measures student proficiency in grade level standards in both English, language arts, and math. An important distinction when looking at 2022 CASP data is to note that the CASP format did change significantly from the pre-pandemic 2019 administration. The number of computer adaptive response questions was shortened by up to half in each claim area for all grade levels. As a reminder, our participating elementary students also had their very first testing experience with CASP, which is also a large change from our prior test administrations. According to guidance from the California Department of Education, another important caveat when analyzing our CASP student performance this year is to refrain from comparing the results in 2022 to the pre-pandemic test administrations. Not only are the tests different, but during the 2021-22 academic year, as you know, we were very much still in the throes of the global pandemic. As a result, the 2022 test administration will be viewed by both the district and the state of California as a reset or baseline year, with the goal of improving outcomes this coming spring in 2023. Although preliminary indicators show LBUSD's performance with 77% of students having met or exceeded standards as among the highest in the county and state, we continue to focus our efforts on helping every student to demonstrate academic growth in order to meet grade level expectations and to prepare for post-secondary pathways. CASP math performance for grades 3 through 8 and 11 indicated that 67% of students met or exceeded standards. Although statewide data has not yet been released for publication and comparison, we're expecting that later this fall, preliminary exploration also shows that LBUSD math performance is higher than the state and county averages. CASP scores will be used as one metric in conjunction with additional diagnostic, formative, and summative student assessment data to help school teams identify areas of focus for the current academic year. Our final district-wide data slide highlights the areas of attendance and discipline. It comes as no surprise that due to factors associated with the pandemic, including student illness, mandated quarantine, and post-COVID physical and mental impacts, more students missed more days of school than in a typical COVID year, a typical year pre-COVID. However, many of these students were following public safety guidelines, and our number one priority is always to keep our students on campus safe and healthy. We look forward to continuing our personalized attendance support protocols this year, and ideally seeing improvement in student attendance. When looking at student discipline, as we discussed with you over the course of last year, the return to full-time in-person learning came with some re-acclimation challenges for some students in the early part of the school year, resulting in an increase in student behaviors. However, through positive behavior, interventions, and support, and a commitment to restorative practices, students across our schools did demonstrate significant improvements in behavior by the end of the year. And this concludes our data highlights from 2021-2022. Thank you so much. I know that was hard to follow Mike, because he always gets exciting things. But board members, do you have any questions or comments?
It is exciting.
It is exciting, it always, the data is perfect, with perfect morsels of significance, it really is. That's, yeah, it was the way she brings it, I just felt like it's hard to follow Mike. Do you guys have any comments, questions?
It was a privilege to attend the presentation at the City Council chambers with the PTA members. I was just so proud of all of you. The site administrators also presented, and every one of the presentations was just outstanding. I'm just so proud of being part of this wonderful organization. My only concern always is it's some of the inaccurate, some of the words that you use, I still don't understand what they are. So I can't imagine what the PTA members think, think about them. So if you could maybe consider spelling out what you're talking about. I also pointed out to you that in my research, that yellow is not a good color to use as far as for older eyes. And some of the slides, as far as yellow background's okay, but the yellow words do not work. And some of the small statistics might be interesting to put the numbers instead of the stats, just to show, you know, what we're talking about is next to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Heather, come.
I had two, actually I had three, three questions. One was for Dr. Valoria on the enrollment numbers. Would it be possible in a future update to look at the live birth rates for 2018 and 2019? The birth rates, the live birth rates, we talked about them, but just so the board has some visibility into what 2023 and 2024 look like. Sounds like those babies have already been born, so we have that data. And then I had a question on facilities. There you are, Jeff. There's a picture of the gym in here, was there a remodel or something done to the high school gym?
I can answer that too.
Okay, thanks.
So if you look at the gym picture, actually the, the highlight of that gym picture is the exterior lights. Those were the original lights. So instead of getting rid of them and purchasing new ones, we retrofitted them and actually had them powder coated and repainted. So those are the original lights there on the gymnasium, and we also did a lot of upgrades. I think we replaced windows and, yeah, all that's new. But the, the highlight of that was honestly Ryan was very excited when he, the fact that we were able to retain those lights, because they are historical, I, I think was really important, because it keeps, you know, the feel of our, of our building. So yeah, that whole place was, was redone from top to bottom.
Yeah, that looks, that looks great. I think as the buildings age, the historical significance of them becomes increasingly more. Each year they, they get older and older, so that's great. I wasn't sure if something had happened in the gym. Go ahead.
If we had a before picture, it would probably help. It definitely looked its age before that was done.
Yeah. And then I had a question for IT on the unit development. Are the teachers allowed to participate multiple times?
Yeah, so we have, if they would participate a second time, the, the requirement is that they bring a friend.
Oh, they're recruiting.
They're recruiting, yeah. So, so it was a conversation Mike and I had, and so oftentimes, you know, there's an interest when one person does it, they like to come do it again. And, and we believe that's great for our school district, but in, in this instance, we want them to say, you know, bring somebody else along, either partner with that person or, you know, so they can, we can work together, build that collaboration. So yes, they could do it multiple times, with the intent though that they have to bring somebody along with them. This next go-round, I think, is majority of everybody is first timers. There's a couple of folks that are doing it again, three, four, three, so.
So they brought a friend.
So they brought a friend.
That's great. And then my last is not a question, it's a comment on the data that Dr. Canenberg shared on the AP pass rates and the AP take rate, I guess. Attempt rate is probably the better, participation is the, the rate. We kind of glossed over it, but I just wanted to point out that coming out of a global pandemic, to see our participation rate go from 28% to 35% is sometimes hard to move things one or 2% in education. So I'm just really pleased by that, how many kids are participating? And then the pass rate going from 78% to 84%. So I'd love to understand a little bit more, have some theories in a future update about why. So I'd love to understand a little bit more, have some theories in a future update about why we think we saw those increase in, in rates and how we can replicate that or build off of that because that's fantastic.
Yeah. I mean, the, the pass, passage rate is climbing back to pre pandemic. It's not there yet. We, we hover right around a 90, 88 to a 90% pass rate. So it made a big leap getting that much closer back. The participation rate has, this is, I think closest to, is the highest that we've ever had. I think, believe this is a record, if not, it's right there at the, at the record. So we've added courses and which is, which is important because you're trying to tap into student interests. And so we've, we've added several courses. And we're continuing to look to opportunities to add additional courses for students earlier on potentially as well. So that way we, you know, our goal would be to have, as we've mentioned, students taking a community college class, maybe students trying an AP class in a subject area that they're interested in. Those are really important factors for us. And so that will hopefully continue to, to improve because that number is, can be higher. I think we can get upwards of my goal would be, you know, if I had my way, every student would be able to take an AP class in some way, shape or form. Whether they participate in the test or not is, is really up to them. But I think that exposure to a subject area that they're interested in is really helpful. It's just an opportunity to get that exposure at one time. And that's, that's like the Avid model, actually. Avid actually has that as their model as well, that each student in the Avid program takes at least, it takes one AP class just for that exposure. So.
Jen, did you? And Dr. Floria, I know you came with that philosophy and helped us see how we had some roadblocks in that area. So thank you for that. And then it really showed, this whole presentation showed how all of the employees of LBSD are living the commitments. So for this level of education to happen, so thank you all of you. And particularly Dr. Keller, thank you so much for bringing back Parent Project. It really will change families' lives. So and enrich them. So thank you for that. And now we're moving on to Stephanie. Everyone's good. This is Public Hearing. Per Education Code, section 60119, district, districts must attest to the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials within the first eight weeks of the school year. Public hearing is opened at 6:59. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on 7A?
None received.
Thank you. So the public hearing is closed at 6:59. And this moves us on to 8A, the monthly financial updates. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comments on 8A?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Norman. And not a lot to report as this is our monthly financials through the end of August. So there's only the first two months of the fiscal year. However, I would like to point two things out for the school board on page two. Under the general fund financial summary, if you'll notice right above the total expenditures row at the table there, there's a transfer of $450,000 last year that had occurred by this time. This year it is $0. So when you look at prior year to date and current year to date in the transfers row, it moves from 450,000 to zero, and that has to do with our transfer to fund 13, our cafeteria fund. So because of the new, the waivers and now the universal meals, the reimbursements coming in higher than we had previously seen with normal food sales. We are not in need of doing that transfer at this time. And so that's why that's occurring. I'd also like to point out, if you look at the, the program, the special program expenditure tables below that on page two still, you'll note that the prior year and the current year tables have exactly the same data. That should not be the case. They should be close prior year and current year, but it's pulling from the same data source. So this is a issue with our running the report. The data itself is correct. It's just showing you the same data twice there. But if you look at the tables below that, the revenues and expenditures, you'll notice the difference from prior year to current. So I just want to make sure the board notes that and that that's why I want to point it out. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Dixon, I just had a question to confirm that employee benefits line on the same page two you were just pointing out. So prior actual was 15.7 million for employee benefits. And then budgeted for the current fiscal year we're in is 1.7 million dollars. Do we have a percentage change there? Is it just an employee, cost of employee benefit increase?
So if you actually look at prior year, the actual, the 15.7 and compare it to annual budget, you can look at more of an apples to apples and it's about a 9.3% increase on at last year's actual to current year budgeted. And that is based on both the actual insurance costs plus the change in staffing. So as we get new staff and they, depending on what plans they pick in open enrollment, that those numbers would change.
But for this year, we're budgeting 18 million, 18.6?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So there is a gross increase of close to
9.3%.
Okay.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Were there any other additional comments or questions before we move on? Hey, give us Victoria and I a second because we just got kicked out. I'm coming back up. Okay. Oh, I can use my mouse. Give me one second. All right, you have it there. I'm just gonna go there. It's a nine, is it 9A? Okay. So we're moving to 9A. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on 9A?
None received.
Okay. Then Mr. Collin, right?
This is the first quarter report for uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement, and there are no complaints at this time.
Thank you for that. Board members, any questions, comments about this? Okay. We're not doing 10, sorry, I moved to 11A. Approval of additional school psychologist intern pay to management. Intern pay to management salary schedule. Thank you. That's good. Now I gotta get back to, I gotta find my stuff on here though. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment on this?
None received. Thank you. Then the floor is yours, Mr. Collin.
Thank you. This is a, a change to the, our management salary schedule. It's the Orange County Department of Ed had reached out to payroll. We've been paying our school psych interns stipend for a number of years, but we don't, we've never had it documented on a salary schedule. So they had requested that we have it documented so that when they, they see the payment, they can go back and see it on the salary schedule. So we just added that to, uh, to appease the Orange County Department of Ed. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Collin? May I have a motion in a second, please? Thank you. Members, are there any comments you'd like to make right now? Then Nick, by rule, this item and the next one, oh, I'm sorry. And Zoe, since it's about compensation, about personnel, you guys can't vote on these two, but then you're back after these. Okay. Okay. So with that, all in favor? Opposed, no. Okay. So the motion carries five zero to approve the addition of school psychologist intern pay to management salary schedule. We're on 11B, approval of increase of day to day certificated substitute rate of to $200. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, President Normand. Yes. So this, this item is requesting that we increase our day to day substitute teacher rate from $180 to $200. Again, it, there's even pre pandemic, there was a shortage of substitute teachers. And we're just wanting to be, be competitive and looking at the, the neighboring districts, they're, they're, they're paying, you know, just below or just above us. And knowing that a vast majority of our subs do not live in Laguna Beach, so just getting into town is not easy. So we're trying to find a way to entice them and, and to, uh, to increase the, the subs coming to us and accepting jobs in Laguna Beach versus our, our neighboring districts. So with this request, we're looking to be, continue to be competitive to ensure that all of our, our, our day to day vacancies are covered.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Collin?
Could you refresh my memory? How much does a long-term sub get?
If that's staying the same at $220. No, I'm sorry. It's a lot. If you're in a long-term assignment, so if you're in an assignment for more than 10 days, you get $220 for your, per day for your assignment where a day to day is, is 200. 220.
Mr. Kindland, is this a proposed temporary or permanent change?
This is a permanent change.
Yeah, Jim could probably answer. I don't think they've gone back down. I think once we approve, they go up. I think they continue to go up. And then will this be enough to cover the 51? I'm assuming they're getting substitutes when Mike does his, uh?
Yes, uh, Michael's enthusiasm and recruitment skills are going to be testing the human resources department, but I am, I'm confident we're up to the challenge.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Okay, may I have a, a motion in a second, please, then? Mr. Steve. Okay, any discussion?
I had a, a point of discussion for the board. We have seen a couple of these increases in the past, which I'm in supportive. I know LA Unified, not just our surrounding districts that we're trying to compete with, but many districts are well over 200 a day. San Diego Unified is all the way at 250, Antelope Valley is at 230, LA Unified at 200 where we're going. Obviously bigger districts, but in the future, if an additional raise comes to us, I'd like HR to consider something that distinguishes day to day from somebody that's coming a lot of days. So some type of tiered structure that if you are a substitute that's filling, say 50% of the instructional days or 25% of the instructional days, meaning they're really committing to being in our schools, that that is a, a higher rate. Because I think that that adds a lot of value to our students in the classroom if they're familiar and working a lot for us. And I think a financial incentive might help pull them into Laguna more days out of the year. Does that make sense, board members? And I noticed when I was researching some of these that other districts do, I know it's possibly administratively challenging, but they do offer some of those types of structures. So kind of a walk-on rate, an extended rate, and then a long-term sub, obviously that's continuing and taking over somebody's classes, a whole different category. So I just wanted to mention that to the board in case we see it again. Cause I, I don't think this is the last time we'll, we'll see a requested increase.
I know the way that we bring in subs has changed from long ago. But we've always encouraged that, as to my understanding, to be available, to come back if the teacher's going to continue to be out because you don't know that the first day. Is that still a practice or do as the way we bring them in not, doesn't match with that?
Just repeat the question. I'm sorry.
Well, that we encourage our subs to, to be available if they, say they come for one day, that whenever we do sub orientation, that they then would come back the next day so that we have continuity. And with the way, in the old way that subs were contacted, you, the more you came, the more you were contacted. So you earned that place in a sense by showing that kind of commitment to the district.
Well, we definitely get, um, when you, you, the teachers build their preferred sub list. So, and, and there's a way to kind of, you know, link that. So there, there's, it's a component of the, of the online system that we're, it can be, there's a preferred sub, so it goes to them first. Okay. It'll call them first and it's not available, then it goes to the, the rest of the pool. So there's, it's built into the, uh, to the frontline, you know, uh, system. So that would kind of speak to that. So if they're, they're frequently, you know, that they're, they're on a number of teachers, you know, preferred lists. And the teachers share those names with others so they can get, you know, once, once their word spread, they're able to hit more frequent calls.
Because the teachers wanted that continuity also, if at all possible.
Oh, absolutely.
And tied in with that, I mean, what do we do for input on performance of subs?
Well, we get, we get feedback from the Ministry of Assistance on the site. We get feedback from the actual teachers when they come back in and get, they get the, the feedback. So we're, we're in constant communication. Anytime we're, we're, we hear of any concerns, we'll do an investigation and determine, you know, what needs to be done. If it needs to be, maybe just letting the person know they're not a good fit or having a conversation. But yeah, it's, there's, there, there's a constant kind of feedback loop from the, from the teaching staff and the, and the, and the students as well, that they're, they're very quick to share and give, give feedback to the teachers and it makes its way back to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Collins, I assume you brought the $200 back because you think that will change it, but obviously if it doesn't, you would come back again or creatively come back?
Yeah, we will continually, you know, to be creative to ensure that we have adequate coverage.
It's, it's a race. Every district's really struggling with subs. We actually, we have been very lucky here in Laguna Beach. You know, I can tell you stories from when I was in Irvine and we couldn't get subs and as principal, and that was many years ago. Laguna has not suffered from those same challenges. Partly because, as you mentioned, Ms. Fickers, the fact that we have subs that like coming here. Our biggest challenges, as Mr. Collin points out, is, is when we're competing against Saddleback Valley. And they have to drive in, we have to make it worth their money. So what we're looking at is in, in essence, $200 beats everything that they provide. With the exception of one day where they might have that they call out as a impacted day. And that's a rate of 215. So our regular rate of pay far surpasses theirs at, you know, 165 and then they have 180. So we're still beating them all the way through. Once we go and they start losing subs, we never know what will happen. The, the bigger challenge that we're actually facing right now as a county, in fact, is not certificated subs. I mean, we're, I mean, everyone's facing that, but everyone's working pretty hard to find certificated folks. The classified subs are, are probably the hardest to come by at this point at the, for all of us. And so it's another area that we're all talking about. I know it's a, a regular conversation at, at OCDE. There just isn't really a pool of people to pull from and some of our special, more specialized things, but I mean, they can't even fill in some districts, not subs, but even just instructional aid positions. I mean, they went, Saddleback went entire year without a, a ton of them filled and we're having to kind of figure it out. And those are really challenging because those are often IEP driven. And so how do you provide that service if you can't find that person? So we're all kind of working to it, but we'll bring forward if, if we need to, obviously. And then we can look at potentially a tiered structure in some ways. Obviously they exist. I'm, I will be interested to see if it's helped some of those districts actually. So if we were to bring that back before we would bring it back, we would want to consider, you know, is it working for them? But, uh, you know, I think our job and goal is always to, to be at the top. We, we pay the top for everything. Let's be at the top as much as we can so that we have continuity in our classrooms. We can provide professional development to our students and have that coverage. And so we also have a general rule. We're trying to, you know, keep from doing any kind of professional development on Mondays and Fridays. That is a very difficult time for us to find subs, just in general, for general coverage of, of staff and, and and other, you know, things that we have going on on those days. So really asking principals and, and Chad in his office, let's try to find as much as we can, limiting that. Now we recognize like OG training, it's a Monday through Friday training. You know, that's what it is, but we, you know, try to stagger it so we don't have everybody out at once. Knowing that an uncovered class is, is not what we want, right? Need somebody in there. So.
Have we ever considered paying mileage? As far as this, the subs, they're coming 50 miles away. That might be an incentive, you know?
Yeah, we would, we wouldn't know where they're coming. We'd have to come up with a form to, to do it. And we can check with county and see if anybody's doing that. It'd be interesting to see what kind of approach. If we get really desperate, I think we would have to look for desperate measures right now. You know, with this, our hope is it'll, it'll beat everybody in the county and then we'll be, we'll be back at the top again. And you know, we just had a little bit of a blip and I think just Mike's being super proactive and trying to get out in front of it. You know, we've had a couple of days where it's been a little tight. Where we had a few classes here and there, but you know, the administrative assistants at the schools do a fantastic job and the principals too of figuring out ways to get coverage. We have teachers, our own teachers will cover classes at times because they can compensate for that. Because within the regular workday. And, uh, you know, the, we have our forced long-term subs that we retain at district level that we send out to school sites as well. So that has worked really well. So kudos to Mike and his team for kind of continuing that this year. We're changing the, the format a little bit so that we're able to deploy those folks out en masse as needed. And, uh, the magician behind the veil on that one is Kelly Murda, who gets in and, and gets that all ironed out. And she's fantastic at it. So we're very focused on making sure that we have the adults in the classroom for our students. It's a priority. And if we have to, and unfortunately this has happened, we've had to change professional development around a little bit to ensure that we have, you know, those adults in the classroom. So it's not the call people want to say, we have to change this. You have to go back to your classroom, whatever it might be. So if we can limit that, that's what we're, we're doing. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that, but I appreciate the board's support.
Definitely all supported in this. Okay, we're ready to vote. Okay. I'm all in favor. They can't because it's money. Yeah. They're, they're now they're waiting. They're waiting till 12. Sorry, all in favor with, okay, post now. Okay. So motion carries five zero to approve the increase of the day to day certificate substitute rate to $200. And this takes us to 12A, approval of resolution number 20-13. Ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for the 2022, 2023 school year per education code. Ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for the 2022-2023 school year per Education Code 60119. Per that section, districts must adopt a resolution attesting to the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials in their core classes, math, ELA, science, social studies, foreign and world language. Within the first eight weeks of the school year, this may include online access in lieu of a textbook. The school board will make a determination through a resolution on the status of the sufficiency or insufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials in the district. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, as you said, ed code requires that each student has standards-aligned textbook or instructional materials to use in class and to take home. This specifically applies to the five areas that were mentioned. And at this time, with social services and the school sites report that all students have access to these instructional materials.
Are there any questions for Dr. Mayberry? May I have a motion? Thank you. Second. Can I hear a second? I'll second it. Any comments or, we're ready to vote? Do you please conduct a roll call?
Nick? Clerk Osborne? Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers? President Armidin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And this moves us to 12B, Approval of the Agreement with Curriculum Association LLC to pilot the elevation, is that the word? Program for the remainder of the 2022-23 school year to support English learner students in the amount not to exceed $20,500. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We bring the social services team is bringing this one forward as a pilot program or pilot platform that we want to use to support students who are learning English as well as the teachers and staff that support them. What's unique about this program is there's three parts. It's broken up into, one is just the platform where it brings all the different student data together related to the English learner language development, test scores, the ALPAC. So it's very accessible and focused around language development and acquisition. There's one that's very specific for like an on-demand set of strategies and support videos and resources for teachers so they can get it immediately. They don't have to wait for another staff member to show up or help them. They can access it any time of the day. And then there's also one that focuses on math, which tends to be an area that they do struggle with, especially when there's a lot more language in math than there's ever been. And then the other piece that is, I think what makes this, what we, our team, when they reviewed it, that we liked is it was built from the ground up for students who are English, who are learning English. Often programs are adopted to different groups of students and their different needs. This one was built specific for English learners. And so we'd like to move forward with piloting this program to add it to kind of the program we already have going and see if it works through the rest of the year. And then bring it back to potentially be used the following year if it's successful.
Thank you so much. It's a great program. Are there any questions?
Can you share with us the number of English language learners that have come into the district this year? Non-English and English learners?
Oh, specifically we've had, I think, 15 at this point, I think 15 newcomers. Which most we've, we've had probably since I think anyone in a long, long time. And so we're, we're definitely reassessing like the way we support our students and the resources we have quite a bit these first few months to make sure we meet their needs and any other resources that they need.
Redefine newcomer? Define what a newcomer means.
A newcomer is in like very new to the language, like, like new to the, new to our district, new to, like, zero language.
A setup question, since I had heard it at PTA Council, the number, but I thought the rest of the board should know. I was just really impressed. And I thought it was 16.
Dr. Mayberry, I had a question. I had a question for you, a couple. The time to implementation, can you talk a little bit about like when we would actually see this up and running with our EL population?
Well, once we, if we're able to move forward with the purchase, there's included in this is professional development. And then we also have to connect any data systems like through Aries, which is where it holds a lot of the English, any data related to students that are English learners. So I would expect that, but tentatively the implementation, probably take about three to four weeks that we would build out the training, build out the connecting their data systems so that we could have something up and running around Thanksgiving. And using so that we can then be training, they're moving out to any additional teachers that may be a second tier. So that can really be up and running, hopefully fully by January at the latest.
That's great. And then it looked like there was 1,100 other districts nationwide when I looked at the program. So it sounds like a wonderful, well-vetted program. The only thing that struck me was on that training that you talked about. Like some of the, in the quote, it showed for one hour of training, $1,000, which just seems really high for some of those areas. Are they doing something within that one hour? Or is, can you just talk to us a little bit about that?
Yeah, they're often, the way companies will set these up is they'll kind of bundle things together. So the, the actual training piece is there, but then it allows us access to follow, to follow-up support with them beyond that. So this part is like that initial piece to kind of get things up and running. And then when we have individual needs or questions, that is, that's included in that.
So it goes beyond the, when it says online webinar training for one hour, what you're saying is that allows us to then ask and get and receive follow-up support, basically. Okay, all right. That was an expensive hour. That was really my only question. Thank you.
Any more questions? May I have a motion? Any discussion or comments? Thanks for bringing this forward. With that, Nick? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. That, we're moving on to 12C, Approval of the Purchase of the Spider Lab Workshop Program for Graphic Media Design Course at Laguna Beach High School in the amount not to exceed $28,000. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards?
Has been expanding the last few years. A lot of the, a lot of their work is around specific equipment and supplies, which we have, actually in some, in some, in many cases have a higher level of equipment. But what's nice about this is it actually, they, they not only have the equipment, but then they bring in a much more kind of entrepreneurship approach to the work. And so our graphic design pathway has done this in the past, but also it's more internal. Might be for something that the district needs, another teacher on campus needs, and they go through a design process. They'll vet it, they'll choose something, they'll design it, get feedback. This is one that adds more of a business component to it. So there's different budgets. They can go, they could potentially go beyond the school to support other people with building and creating things. And then they bring on two staff members twice a week to support the students. So as you know, I think most, many of you have been in that classroom. It's a lot of different things going on at one time, right? And really we have one teacher. So there's a lot of independence that kids have, but bring in two staff members on to then help during the week to support that kind of extra level to get that work-based learning, to get them to feel the skills that they would need for potential career and that, and then the business components as well. So we're kind of excited to use our grant funds for this to enhance a course that's already fairly popular, but making it, taking it to another level with a work-based learning approach.
Any questions for Dr. Mayberry?
Just making sure the two staff members are from Spider, not two of our staff.
May I have a motion in a second? Any comments or discussion? It's exciting. That's the business side of this as well. So right to it. So Nick, you're good? Okay, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries five zero. And this moves us on to 13A. And I thought we would take a very quick break and be back in five minutes. Okay, everyone. We're going to jump back in. So we are on consent calendar. Clerk Osborne, are there any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, none received. Thank you.
So this is move us to B. Do any members wish to make a comment or ask a question on the consent item but not pull it to have a board, separate board discussion or separate vote? Okay, I actually have one. I just want to, on L, I just want to make a comment. The approval of technology contract and license. Internet email, what happened with ransomware with LA? I am so grateful to Mike Morrison for bringing in all of the phishing software that happens with all the employees, really helps train them on when to click or not click and how important it is. And just, I don't know if it trains the students as well. Like I don't, do they, the students get stuff or is it the employees? Okay. Right, because it could corrupt if they click on different things. I guess they don't really get that kind of email though, but anyways, I just think it's great. So I really appreciate it. I'm glad it's back. Okay. So then, can I have a motion in a second on all agenda items, AC3T? Thank you. Thank you, Dee. Dee second it. Oh. I don't know who's on first. As long as Victoria knows who's on first, we're good. Okay, so then, I don't know why I don't have their vote in there in there. What you guys get to put on this? So Nick? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And this moves us to governance. Review and discussion of the 2023 board meeting. Oh my God, I jumped too far ahead. No, 14. Yeah. Sorry, I have different numbers than you. I don't know why. But the what mine says review and discussion board meetings. Oh. We are on 14A, governance discussion. Okay, a review and discussion of the 2023 board meeting dates? Okay, Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on 14A?
None received.
Okay, no comments, no public comments. No, I forget. I want to bring this back now. Okay, is there any discussion on these dates that Victoria had pulled and presented?
I think there was a question mark on December 14th. Due to Hanukkah, December 15th, should we move to Tuesday? So at least we could start there.
Why don't we start in January? So first
You don't like to start backwards?
Well, for January, it's easier. Then we can just go down top to the bottom. That way I don't miss anything because I think I'll miss something if I don't start at the top. So January, the board just took action on my attendance at a conference. So that will, that second January meeting, which is our recognition and as well as some governance, which will be planned with the, the new president, because for sure you will not be here to be president. So right now, as it stands, I'll be gone. So if the board wishes to retain that date, just know I will not be present. I will be at the superintendent's conference. So we can either do it. You can do it without me, your choice. But the proposed potential date for consideration, again, this is not an action item. This is just simply us to be able to discuss and then bring back for the future meeting, the actual dates. But it can be either that Tuesday, the 31st, which would be kind of the first available date, or that, that Thursday, which I think is the second of February, and that's another option. Or we could also do the 19th, but then that would be on the heels of the 12th. So it'd be two Thursdays in a row. So, and that's a short week, just to be aware, the 19th is a four-day week, which is usually a little busier for us. But again, if the board wants to do it on that, that Thursday, we can. So just trying to get some consensus on what you'd like to see on that day.
I have a question. So for the recognition, because I haven't done the two, the winter and the spring recognition events. Is there a reason why we wouldn't put recognition on the January 12th? Because we would be in this room, and here's my logic, usually for a Brown Act or governance or a strength session, we would be in the district office boardroom for a smaller, more conducive to having that type of a discussion. So.
Yeah, yeah, we probably would be here for that. The reason for the 12th is to do the recognition, people are, they're traveling because of the holiday. And for us to get out the invitations and to get people to confirm, it is really a challenge for us to get them to actually, we want them to come and confirm they're going to be there. So having more time is, is easier for us to actually get, get everybody notified. And so that would be, we would, would advise against using the 12th as that date.
So could we move recognition to like February? I guess I'm trying to maybe, do the two need to be together? They seem like an odd combination to do a recognition event, which is kind of a formal event that needs to be in this room or this room plus a lot more seats even. And the Brown Act Governance Study Session, which I have a personal opinion, works better in the district boardroom because it's small. Do you see what we're doing right now? It's really hard for me to communicate with Jan when I'm like this.
Yes, it's a six o'clock meeting, so it's here.
We could forego the, we can do just a recognition and, and have a separate workshop date not listed on here to be determined for governance and workshop if the board wants to do that. That's, that's an option. It just will add, you know, it's just a workshop date. We can do that a separate. It's perfectly fine. We've done that before. And not attach it to a meeting. So that, so it could be anytime. We can do that in February.
Or we could add the recognition to a regularly scheduled meeting.
We've done that. It's, it's really tough. And the board is, yeah, unless the board wants to change the protocol, but the last couple of years when we've done the recognition and fully so focused on that, it's been a much better, much better receipt. But again, I just, we just need to know, one, if we do, if we could do a recognition only, is Tuesday, the 31st, an okay day to do that recognition? Or would the board prefer we look at the February 2nd? I think that's what it was, right?
It's not with me, but I can, I can be gone. And I, you know, I looked carefully at what we were looking at beforehand before I, I had to make some plans. And I also know that our board, our Board Bylaw 9320 says that regular board meetings will be held at 6:00 PM on Thursday, and this is changing it to a Tuesday. But I, I made specific plans around the other dates, but I can, I, you know, and that, that would be okay.
Yeah. Perfectly fine.
Well, I'm not going to be here this second either. So you can leave it there. Yeah, but it wasn't one that was on this, so.
And, and recognize, when we send out that list, it's a very much a proposed list because there's a lot of things that we don't get, like, we have no idea. We do that in advance, actually, just trying to give you a general ideas board. But there are conferences and things that I don't have dates for. It's just the way it always is.
And I understand that this conference came out and it's important you go.
We try to flex out as much as we can, so.
I don't have a problem with that. I just am trying to be responsible and I looked at it all and, you know, agreed to do something else.
Yeah, totally understandable.
And if it's recognition and that's all it is, they also could just have it on the Thursday.
We could do that. And then, are we comfortable that, so that Victoria and I know that we'll do recognition on either, sounds like Tuesday sounds better. It's fine for everybody. And then we will look for a date in February to do the workshop, maybe the 9th or the 16th, and then the other one will be a meeting, regular meeting. Is that? I can't be here the 24th, that January 24th through the 26th. No, no, of course. We can do an evening, yes. That's the question. Correct.
I think I agree with Member Perry. We tend to, tend to look closely at scheduling things on Thursday evenings as board members, even if we don't have a calendar. So.
This won't, this is not, we're not making a decision yet. So this is simply a conversation. This won't, this is not, we're not making a decision yet. So this is simply a conversation. I will definitely talk with our future board member after as well. And, and confirm, but no decisions are being made tonight. So that way we can kind of flex it. That way we can at least have a, a general schedule for discussion.
I don't want to say thank you because this, remember Perry probably remembers, for start, like you start your first meeting and then you have this in front of you and you vote on the dates, right? So it's so nice that you guys are having a discussion ahead of time and, and working.
We'll work it out between now and, because it actually. Correct.
Yeah, December meeting, when you guys vote on this.
We're two months in advance.
Yeah, so it's amazing.
So the, so, okay, so February ninth through sixteenth, people are both available for those. So we'll determine when the business meeting date will be for that. That, and then we'll pull off and the other one will be just a workshop. So we'll not be listed on here, just to work clear, because these are our regularly scheduled board meetings. The workshop is separate. We have another May, as we've talked about, we're trying to move and shift as much as we can, the LCAP and budget into May. So we're going to have two regular meetings in May. That way we can attempt to adopt the budget and LCAP at the twenty-fifth of May and have a recognition meeting in early June. Thursday, June first or Tuesday, June sixth. The reason for that is because of graduation being on that Thursday of. Would that be the eighth? We don't want to be doing it then. So Thursday, June first, looks like it'd probably be a good date for our recognition. The end of the year recognition, where we gather the second semester. The athletes for winter and spring and any of those. For reclassification, et cetera. And then that June fifteenth would be the business meeting in June. Does June first look okay for everybody for that Thursday to hold the recognition? Then we have July.
Dr. Laura, sorry to interrupt. So can you just give me some history on why we don't do the recognition and then why we can't just have the meeting while we're all here? Because I noticed two things, when we, when we put everybody in one room, there wasn't enough seats, but it sounds like we've dealt with that because it's two different events now historically. But then after that event, so everybody will have a seat or close to a seat. Everybody kind of leaves. So why wouldn't we just do our board meeting? And not have to have a whole separate meeting where the board is present and we do just recognition and then we come back another week and do the meeting.
So in the past, we had asked as a board to separate them because we would have them, especially down in, in the district office, but we'd have the meeting. And we didn't really have time to go talk. We jumped, right, we'd recognize everyone. And we'd see them before the meeting. We'd see them outside and then we'd jump in the meeting and then we'd be like, okay, we have to start business. Right? And we'd just start our business and then they would kind of shuffle out. And the last time when we had it alone, just with them, that's the whole purpose of it, really allowed everyone to focus in and on who we're recognizing and spending time with them.
I see that, that sounds like a, a good plan. Could we just take an intermission? Could we take an extended break for twenty minutes? Because it did seem like it's kind of a long event and so the people weren't lingering too long afterwards. I kind of remember the room cleared pretty quickly. Some people left after they received their awards, so.
I think before decisions made. We should look at the length of time of the last recognition. To determine if this, if the board wants to do, recognize you could be here for five to six hours. So, but if that's what the board wants to do, happy to, happy to oblige. So, but recognize. I'm, I will tell you that, that, that June fifteenth meeting is going to be long. And we don't want to do it after school gets out. If you want to do it May twenty-fifth, that's the LCAP and budget adoption. It's totally up to the board, but I would just. I know how long the last recognition was in June. It was a long, it was a lot of recognitions. We're going to hopefully break those up into half and it won't be as long necessarily. But they are still long. We, and that was the purpose of doing it so separate is because we were rushed. The board didn't have an opportunity to talk to students. You know, in previous years, we've had the artwork up and been able to, you know, have students were showing their artwork. We'll hopefully do that again in this January with the plein air and the, the students for PTA. And it give a little bit more, but again, the, the board has the purview. Right now, as it stands, you know, we're not having two business meetings in June. We're having one business meeting in June and the other one will be recognition. If the board wishes to move it, June fifteenth, I would not encourage because people will not show up after school is out. So then we would look at May twenty-fifth being the recognition meeting. So again, we can consider it. Well, I know notice is tonight, we'll bring back and talk it through again at the November meeting if.
So basically, are you saying, Dr. Valoria, that we, we, we wouldn't really have that much business on June first? If we do the recognitions, we're not missing out on.
Having a, we're not having.
Do it on the twenty-fifth and on.
We're not having a business meeting. The, the recognition meeting is June first or June sixth. There will not be a business meeting because we're moving the business meeting to May, well, two business meetings in May. Instead of having two in June, because by the time we're out so early now, we're district businesses wrapped up much earlier. So the intent is to shift that and, and do that and have the two meetings in May instead of having two in June.
I was looking at, I, I understood that we weren't, it was just going to be recognition. I just was hoping we weren't putting a whole bunch on another meeting because that one was just.
No, no, no. So May twenty-fifth will be a big one because there'll be those two big items as usual. Hopefully collective bargaining, whatever we have to wrap up there. Will be, also be on that agenda, because again, we're still in session. So that's a goal that we have. And then the next business meeting would be the fifteenth. Again, just like we did this last year in June, where we did the full wrap up. That's our intention again this year, where we do kind of a longer, longer presentation to the board. And so really that from the twenty-fifth on is really a determination of if the board wishes to do the recognition that way. So what we'll do is we'll bring it back as a recognition on June first. We'll talk again a little bit about it. If the board doesn't want to do that, we can shift it to the twenty-fifth. And then we just won't, we'll move, you know, the June fifteenth will slide over into the, the column one there and then we won't have another one in June. So.
One, Jim, you also have to complete his superintendent evaluation as well. So there's process in that and there's additional meetings. So. Starting the month with the recognitions could be all the nice. Victoria, you're going to say something, yes?
So then in July, either day, any issues right now for the twentieth or twenty-seventh, anything preferred? I know it's hard to look out that far, but. For us, it's, I would prefer the twenty-seventh personally, because that gives us a little more time and for people to get their breaks in June and July now, because that seems to be the case. So if that's comfortable, bring back the twenty-seventh. August sixteenth is looking with our first day of school tracking the twenty-fourth. Then we have the two in September, two in October, both being study sessions in the second column. The sixteenth in November, and then we have December fourteenth. The last day of Hanukkah is, is the fifteenth. So is there consideration to move it to December nineteenth or keep it on the fourteenth? You're allowed to speak. It's okay. For sure. That's exactly, we just want to be sensitive. Perfect. Okay, that's why we just wanted to verify, confirm that everyone's comfortable. So. All right, we'll bring back. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
This past summer, we took a, I thought we took a month off.
We did.
And I'm wondering where that month off is in this calendar, because that was really nice. I thought the cabinet and I thought the board really appreciated that.
So that we can, we will, we can bring back the board bylaw for a discussion on the meeting's schedule. So. We really didn't because we had to meet, but we didn't have a business meeting. So, but no, we didn't actually get the full month. But the business part is the part for us, the, of staff. Right now, we have it slated. That we would have that July meeting. It's part of what the board bylaw is. We can bring them back for the board consideration to determine. You know, that could be one that is. If needed, you know, type of meeting, the board can, can adjust that. I would like the board, the board are going to need to adjust the May anyways to make this change. So. Correct. We've had two meetings in June. Yeah, that, that window, moving it to that gives us an extended period. We, we start to agenda prep, obviously, about a week, two weeks in advance. So there's, there's that window there, but the board can determine. We can bring it back for discussion, for sure. And then. Make that change.
Bring it back for discussion with this next on the twenty-seventh, when we bring other policies back, so which means that you're prepared. Okay, so add that to the twenty-seventh. Because in, in June, you guys also, you have all the promotions, you have the superintendent evaluation. You have, there's, again, there's something else too. So June gets so busy, right? That's nice to have. Nice to have that break.
Yeah, June is really busy. That's why I'm also looking, if we're doing half the recognitions, to put the recognition together with a. Point in time where we're already all convened, because it's very, very busy.
Yep. Okay, well, we'll work on that and then I will touch base. And make, confirm that those dates are amenable. And then again, we'll, we'll bring it back for a little more discussion, but then the actual vote, vote will be in December. So.
We're good? Yep. So this moves us on to fifteen A. The school, the second reading and approval of BP six-one-five-three, school. School sponsored trips. May have a motion and a second to approve this policy. Are there any comments, questions, discussions before we vote? Okay. We ready for a vote? Okay, just want to make sure. Nick? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Member Perry, I didn't hear you either way. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you on I or, I didn't hear member Perry on I or opposed. I, I didn't hear you. Okay, motion carries five zero. And this moves us on to fifteen B, the first reading board policies in the three thousand series. May have a motion and a second to move the policies in the three thousand series. Oh, I wouldn't take public comment on the last one either. I'm so sorry. Okay, is there any public comment?
None received.
Fifteen B, okay. May have a motion and a second to move the policies in the three thousand series forward for a second reading. Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, discussion before we vote? Okay, Nick? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. This brings us to fifteen C. Are there any public, is there any public comment on fifteen C, clerk Osborne?
None received.
Thank you. This is for the first reading of board policies in the seven thousand series. May have a motion to move it forward to the second reading. Thank you. Any discussion questions?
So, I think discussion on this would be that ninety-three twenty is. Meetings and notices, so it has the board meeting cadence. So it states that the board shall hold one or two regular meetings each month. Oh my gosh, it's been a long day. Sorry.
We're in seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
Or so, I was like, I had to look. I was like, where's my cursor? President.
It has been a long day. Sorry about that.
I had one question on seven thousand. It's, it's marked that there was a revision, but I just didn't see it green lined. Do you know what the revision was on seven thousand? It's just the start of the series facilities, the philosophical ones. Yes, Victoria's looking at right now. Jeff, do you remember what the revision was on that?
Yeah, I, I remember we wanted to do a general comment about the pursuit of all available funds outside of general fund, but that was added into the budget into the three thousand series. And that may be what we were talking about. We were trying to fit it in the facilities. But it made more sense generally because it applies to more than just facilities. You can seek grant opportunities for all kinds of things, as long as it was financially reasonable and feasible for the district.
And that was the general feedback was to make sure that if it applied overall, that it would apply.
So I see the, in thirty-one hundred on budget, we did add, we'll call it not redlined, green lined. The budget should also be developed with the intent to offset or pursue additional funding to support the priorities of the district to the greatest extent possible.
Correct.
So this is a question for, that was a question, but are we in discussion on the motion? Okay, so fellow board members, did we want this as well in facilities or were we comfortable just having it in budget, basically that we seek grant funding where we can?
I, I kind of, I like as overarching for the philosophy for budget and then it applies, applies to everything we spend money on. Okay, right?
So we don't need any facility. So there was nothing else that we had requested.
Correct. I think it was more about that overarching guide that we want to pursue all available funds for our work we do.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Is there anything else in the seven thousands per comment question? Oh, I thought Jim was reaching for his mic. Okay. Then Nick? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. This brings us to fifteen C. Clerk Coste, have you received any public comment cards on fifteen C?
No.
Okay, may have a motion and a second to move the bylaw. Thank you. More in comments, questions, discussions. Did you have a comment?
Thank you for your patience, everybody. So the regular meetings on ninety-three twenty. Recognize that it states we will have. One meeting held in July, August, November, December, February and April. And that we will have. Two meetings, one or two depending on Thursdays, the other meeting. So. We're covered with May, right? Because we can have two business meetings in May. But in June, having only one business meeting, so we would need to add June to the list. And if the board had interest in having flexibility to have a July meeting if necessary, then we would need to add that language for consideration.
I would just confirm with, I thought it was stated in law, there's two in June. I could be wrong, like, right? You're, you just confirm, I just.
It's just the only reason, it's not laws, that you, LCAP and budget and your number, however you do it is fine.
Except you had it done by the end of June.
Yes.
President Norman, and why do we need this sentence saying that only one regularly scheduled meeting can be held in those specific months? Like what dictates that these are our own board bylaws? So.
This was during, this was for the business meetings that we, that you voted on in December. And then you can have many other meetings. You have special meetings and stuff like that and workshops. So it was trying to, on the meeting, on the months that either are short months. Right? For other, because of holidays and other things around the schools, we weren't forcing two meetings in there. And then.
Not typically, because spring break always gets in the way of, we can't typically ever have two meetings. We haven't, it's been late. It's been a long time, yeah. And because we detached it from, so now it lands based off the academic calendar. Not, it used to be that it would fluctuate a lot because it was tied to Easter. It was no longer tied to Easter, tied to academics. So it lands in the academic window, which is pretty much the same.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with member Vickers that trying to keep the board bylaw updated to the months that make most sense to do the business. Seems like a futile effort, which is should say we should hold one or two regular meetings each month. Yeah, that's okay. But does a board bylaw have to call out the specific months? That we're going to do one meeting versus two, or can our policy just say we will hold one or two meetings each month?
We create, Mark was in the room with the workshop and created it. So maybe just checking back with the lawyers to make sure there wasn't some reason, because we actually called it out. I remember.
It used to be called out that we had two business meetings a month. The board has every, the board has every authority to. The board has every, the board has every authority to to vote, and that's what you did. You voted to change your calendar, which is perfectly fine, as Mark would. So. Correct, correct. So the board, this is the intent, but the board could, you can, right? So you don't have to have a change, but if you wanted the change to align to what the plan you'd.
The action taken in December overrides this.
Would set what it is.
Yeah, but I remember Mark.
Then you could have someone say, well, you're, you know, your your calendars conflict with your, you know, by law. So however, the, you know, the calendar is public. It's very clear, you know, we do make changes. We have, we have to make changes based on various reasons, whether it be holidays or emergencies, whatever it might be. We've had to move regular scheduled meetings because of emergencies, fires, et cetera. So the board can vote and move things accordingly as necessary. So we used to have it very, it was the same way. It was very clear. So this was just simply taking the previous language when we had it and splitting off, like, these are the months where for sure only having one business meeting. And that was the preview of the previous board when we brought this forward. You all have, it's your by law, you have every right to leave it or adjust it or not. So.
I propose striking the months called out in the policy.
Would say what I said again, because it seems like we need to call it out. And then we need to make the changes when we approve it at the annual meeting. Keeping in mind that we need to be as consistent as possible if we want people to come to our meetings.
What was the comment Victoria made, member Vickers? I didn't hear.
Need to be as consistent as possible if we want people to come to our meetings and be involved at the board meetings.
But what was the comment about having to specify the months?
I'd leave it in because I would have to submit to the county. And then whatever we adopt at the annual meeting, that's why we have to adopt them then. So that then it's known exactly when we're going to meet.
So what do we, what do we submit to the county? It's the Victoria piece that I didn't hear. I'm not understanding.
Well, I submit a report of how often we have our meetings and when they're, when they're regularly held and if there's fluctuation. So what Jan and I were talking about was in around 2014, 15. Members of the public were stating they didn't necessarily know when we were holding our meetings. So they wanted it very clear in the bylaw. Study sessions as necessary later, but it did call out, it called out before I got here. This language. And then a couple of members of the public were wanting to know where we had the language. And so it was in our board by law. In your board by law.
I can always contact Mark and just verify, you know, what language do we have to have in order to be compliant and share back with the board so that we can further discussion. So maybe table this one. First read, we have still a second read. That's right. We can pull it then. So that's okay with everybody? I'll work on that.
Yeah. Any other questions on any other in the 9000 series? Nick? All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Governance reporting, 16A. Clerk Osborne, you have the floor.
Thanks, President Normandin. Couple of events attended in the last four weeks since our last regularly scheduled board meeting. I attended the high school back to school night. I attended the UCI Eclipse event with Dr. Valoria. That's a group related to environmental literacy. Their kickoff, we learned about this group that's dedicated to K through 12 climate change, education and action efforts. On the 21st, I attended the School Power Foundation, their fall trustee meeting. A couple of things I wanted to share with the board for this fiscal year for school power, they have approximately 150,000 budgeted for teacher grants. And they have about 300,000 budgeted for family resource center services, which is really nice. They also started a parenting book club. They had 60 people sign up to read How to Raise an Adult. So they're really pleased with that. And yeah, and I think that's kind of an example of some nice deep learning that parents will be doing to actually read the whole book and come together to talk about it. And then I also wanted to extend a welcome to their new trustees. They served for three years. The families that are new trustees are the Catan family, the Ingle family, the Hall family, the Ray Hall family, the Satchdev family, the Shareno family, and the Walden families. So I really am excited to see their involvement, a lot of new trustees at the school power level. I also that afternoon attended Orange County School Board's legislative and budget webinar. And on the 23rd, I toured the high school admin and office buildings, where all the counselors and assistant principals and their meeting spaces to get a sense of that. And last week I attended Thurston's Fall Sports Openers. Their only home games, so the one and only home games for their boys volleyball. And the following day, their girls basketball. And it was really, really fun. There wasn't a seat left in the house. The band played. They had so many students there. I went to an away game yesterday in Newport. And while they had a lot of parents filling the seats, they didn't have the band play. And they didn't have all the students there cheering on their fellow players. So I thought, what a nice introduction for our students to show that league what the Thurston spirit's all about. So a couple of other things, I wanted to recognize all of our administrators for the week of the school administrator. It's the second full week in October. And this includes all principals, assistant principals. You know, any type of school leadership. It's a broad term used for people that are leaders in special education, curriculum assessment, school business officers, classified leaders. I think as a board, we all know that great schools are led by great principals and great principals are directed by great superintendents. And great superintendents are supported by all the people around them. So thank you, guys. And just a warm extension of gratitude. And that's it.
Thank you for your report, Robert Perry.
Good evening. I didn't go back that far. I forgot. We didn't talk at the last meeting. So I'm only the last two weeks, but that the things that I liked best in the last two weeks that I went to was Together for Teens, which I think you would have all really enjoyed. It was a conference at Capo Valley High School. And it had teenagers there along with their parents, along with people that are trying to be involved and help teens. And, you know, they talked about suicide being the third leading cause of death, but that opioids were the first leading cause of death for 17 and under. And so they, we went into all of the different, what happened on social media with TikTok, what happened with Instagram? What happened? And the drug availability is so quick that they find a student just puts on that they might be interested and somebody's at the end of their block saying, hey, I'm here. I'm on the corner. Come on down. And one mom was talking about, they went back and saw that happen to her son who was 14. And we know that the amounts are not what kids think. And he died that night. I mean, he got four times the amount that would kill someone. So there was a panel of teenagers that talked. And I loved that they talked about one of their questions was, how do you find good friends? How do you find another teen that you can really talk to? And they were also talked about what songs, what was their playlist to make them happy or their playlist when they were sad? And they talked about using meditation and yoga and other things. The keynote speaker was a lovely young woman named Carol Long, who's a senior at UC Davis and majoring in psychology. And she had a lot of mental health challenges that she said started, which surprised me, in preschool. That she felt like she was odd in preschool. And other people thought she's just really quiet. And by second grade, she was doing self harming. And then her whole story goes, you know, goes on and she's, she's doing much better now. But she and her parents started an organization. And what I really like about it, I looked, I looked at it, is it's teensforteenshelp.org. And it's not for an emergency. I mean, they give the numbers to call for an emergency, but it's things that teens talking about their issues. So you can see that you can ask questions anonymously. And then they, they do have counselors there at answering questions that the teens ask. But somebody can do it in their bedroom. Nobody else has to know, which is really helpful for some, some teams. Dr. Sarah Ruiz from Chalk also spoke. And mostly parents were at that discussion. Now, the, the students there had different classes than the the parents and the adults had. And then we all came together at two different times. I also did a field trip, like Jim, to the port. And the teen lab for the teen place for Boys and Girls Club. And I was just so impressed with EJ Gomez, who was a student here all the way. Elmore, actually, Thurston High School. And he became a professional skimboarder. He went to UC Santa Barbara. But he also knows martial arts. He's an artist. He does acrylic painting. Anyway, he's running the port now and really trying to get more kids to go there as a safe place. When I went, there were only two kids there that I did get to talk to, but he has his van. And he picks people up at the high school and takes them there. And so it's easy for them to get there and he'll help them. Whether it's self defense or basketball or with their homework. And they're starting a new yoga class there that I think 13 young women have signed up for. And on Thursdays, he does Dungeons and Dragons, which is popular. He's gotten a lot of kids for that, but it's nice. He's got the pool table. He's got instruments. And anyway, I would encourage people, kids to go there as a safe place to go. And that's it. Oh, one more thing. Oh, I'm sorry. If anybody is interested, next week I'm going to the, look at the Adult Transition Culinary Lab, if anybody else wants to go. And also on Saturday, going to saddle back, they have a new building and classrooms to coordinate with our CT, with our CTC program. So anybody wants to do that, that's it.
Thank you for the report, member Kelly.
Oh, yeah. I filled in for Dee at the CCA meeting. And I'm going to let Jen talk about it because it was so involved and intense that the woman who is running the meeting I had met before. And when the meeting was over, she introduced herself to me. And I says, well, I've met you before. And I said, and I said that I would never forget you. And she said, no one had ever said that to her before, but she, she really stood out. I must, I must say that. So the, Jen will talk more about that. I went to the PTA council meeting, which I find just exciting. And I could take my three minutes and just talk about all the different things that the PTA is doing in each of the schools, which is just fabulous. But I want to point out to you that we have 303 members at Elmore, 260 PTA members at the high school, 301 at Top of the World, and 200 at Thurston. And I'd encourage you all to join. It's very reasonable and it's very easy to do as far as, but it's, it's a very worthwhile group. And I really enjoy attending their, their meetings. I also attended the Community Coalition, which is a community and and school and public safety group. And it speaks a lot about, yes, I heard that. It started by us and we gave it over to someone else. The, the hospital, I think, Mission Hospital, I think, is, is running it now. Providence Mission, yeah. But it's a, a, a good, a, a good group and focusing a lot on drug prevention. And it was a very worthwhile meeting. With a nice representative, Michael Keller was there. The principal of the Thurston was there. The head of the PTA Council was there and I was there. And I think also the school resource officers, we had a really nice representation. And the last thing was the thing that I talked about earlier, that I got to see the, the school update in the council chambers, which I was just very impressed about. Thank you.
What was the coalition? Thank you. Oh, we can't go on discussion.
Focus on drug, drug, drug abuse and drug prevention. And upcoming events in the, in the community, I think, was the other big thing that they were involved in. Yeah.
Thank you for the report. Right, member Bakers?
I did attend the high school back to school night also. And it was probably livelier than they have been for quite a while. I mean, people are really excited to be, to be able to come back and get those reports from their students, teachers. And they, I love it watching them try to find the classes. But it was, it was well attended. They, I also attended the homecoming game. And again, the students are really excited to be back at school. And you can see, I guess it's, you know, you lose, you lose something for a while. Think you have a greater appreciation. So perhaps that's another upside to what comes out of the having to shut down. Is that at a young age, students have experienced that, of what it's like to, to have more gratitude for what you took for granted. And so it's, you know, that's, if that has that positive impact, I think it's really good. But it was the skits that they did. They're always fun to watch. And the students were really, really excited. Then the, I went to a volleyball game and that was, I saw one of our Elmore teachers, Jamie Jamison, who did play volleyball when she was here as a student. She had her son there, who was so excited to talk to, he was talking to me about coming the next day up here to have his first Thurston match. So really, really excited to do that. But the students were, had a big student cheering section for our high school. And this mascot was there and they, it was, again, just enthusiasm and, and the participation. They, I also was online on that budget presentation, which was fast. It was fast. And then the CCA meeting, which Jim did come, and it was not intense, if you thought that was intense. But they have, they're going along smoothly. Everything's going well. And they have so many courses that have the A through G. I mean, it's just incredible. The changes taking place. It's not just a few. It's basically everything. And then the pathways, and they have approved some new courses. And I didn't look it up before I came. So I'm remembering lifeguard and e-games. And there's a third one as new courses. But they talked a lot with the questions that came from other board members that the career possibilities with some of these, like what's in the e-games field. And it's, so they're offering, offering that course. That's very good. But I think, you know, I think when you, some of the things that I read recently, I just wanted to compliment our district on moving so far ahead so quickly with social emotional that we, so much that I read now refers to students that it started before the pandemic. It just escalated more during the pandemic, but these issues were there with our young people before that. And as a reminder of that. So we were addressing those issues before the pandemic. And I'm thinking how hard it must be to be a school district where they hadn't had the opportunity. And I, I say hadn't had the opportunity because a lot of it is funding based. If we didn't have the funds that we have here, we wouldn't have been able to hire the people like Michael Keller. We wouldn't have been able to go in those directions to hire social workers, to hire more counselors. And they're struggling now to have these kids come back who, where the problems have grown. And they're just trying to, to get started. So I'm just, I mean, we're really fortunate that. And I would say Dr. Valoria had the insight to head us in that direction. And I have to say, as an anecdote, I can remember when we started it because my sister used to watch more of our meetings than she does now. She burned out. She's up in, in Northern California. Rural, rural Northern California. But she said, what are you guys doing? Okay, what is this social emotional stuff? And then it wasn't very long before she started saying, that's, you know, that's really on target. So anyway, thank you for that.
Thank you for your report, Robert Bakers. And I wasn't going to give one, but just sort of say, I'm having a discussion, but repeating what you were saying of how important it is. As a headhunter, I'm always looking at jobs. All the pushes, every district needs to have a director of social emotional, and then they'll have, like, other positions. And I'm thinking, yeah, we're past that. What, what's the future? What's the future stuff? Right? So yes, thank you for the foresight on that. And I'm thinking, yeah, we're past that, what, what, what's the future, what's the future stuff, right, so, yes, thank you for the foresight on that, and the floor is yours for your report.
Just really quick, um, the last two days I was up um in Burbank at uh AXA, which is the Association, Administrators Association. I'm the Region seventeen, Orange County, essentially Region seventeen Vice President of Legislative Action. Um, you can thank Dr. Dr. Hatchell for roping me in to do that. Um, but uh, actually, I really enjoy, it's the legislative side of things, but it, it is interesting to hear um. Um, just the process that things are going through uh right now at the state level, obviously, there's, everyone's focused on their getting reelected. Um, or new elections, um, a lot of moving parts, uh, but we are seeing um. At the state level, decline in revenues um to the tune of four billion dollars. Um, you know, the state uh requires, very dependent on capital gains for uh most school districts, we are not one of those. Um, but uh, there is some concern from most school districts, kind of watching this cut. Um, of what it could look like, because this is current year revenues, um, and what the, the budget will look like moving forward, um, at the governor's level, so. Um, uh, I am amazed at, uh, you know, sometimes how infighting gets in the way of um students. And uh, a case in point, this last year, uh, there was a graduation requirement uh component that was, there was a bill that was sailing through and. Uh, would have extended um a graduation requirement option for students. And it got held up because of infighting between the two, uh, the Senate and the Assembly. And it could have actually jeopardized students' abilities to graduate. Um, AXA um jumped on it with some, and got some other partners involved, and added language to the budget trailer, because the bill died. To the budget trailer language, um, it would, in order for it to continue uh to provide that option for students, so. It's unfortunate, but I think we all know politics can end up that way, um, but that's why it's really important that our voices are heard, is yours as well, obviously, CSBA is a really important arm. Um, and was probably one of the, the different groups that was, was part of supporting AXA, there has been a lot of joint, if you haven't um noticed. A lot of joint sponsorships between CSBA and AXA over the last several years. Uh, I expect that to have a partnership to continue. Um, but i- it is one of those things we're looking ahead, um, trying to pull back some of the local control that we used to have pre-pandemic. Um, and now the legislature has given lots of dollars to the districts, but that always comes with a plan requirement, so. If you recall, the LCAP was intended to get rid of all of these extra plans. Um, but as you have witnessed, we bring lots of plans to you um, uh, for approval, um, and/or for information items. And uh, so we are hopeful, um, and, and one of the areas that I think we'll probably continue to look at is getting back to, you know, the LCAP. Um, being really a, a driving force in school districts, um, getting us out of the constant plan writing. And uh, giving some of that local control back, and so um, we're not sure what uh is on the horizons for some of the bills that we'll see. Um, coming forward, but um, you know, it will be a new uh, with a lot of redistricting, as you guys are all aware. Um, at the Assembly and then the Senate, I think it's like half now and half, two years out, so. Um, we're still trying to figure out who's in which district for what, for what timelines, it's gonna be really interesting on the Senate side. Um, but uh, it's, uh, we're moving forward, and then the last thing, um, as you're all aware, I've been the uh, kind of superintendent. Supporting the other superintendents around mental health in, in the county. Um, and proud to report, we're, we're almost um done uh getting our application, and when I say our, the, the county application. Uh, with CalOptima, um, it's the SB HIP, it's the Student Behavioral Grant, it's a very large grant. Um, that uh will hopefully be able to partner um with CalOptima and the Health Care Agency here in Orange County. And the Orange County Department of Education to provide really um, mental health services to all students. Um, regardless of income status, uh, really is the goal, um, and quality and support services for students, so. That is uh, that will be forthcoming, it doesn't require anything on our part, um, other than Michael answering some questions around just what we do and how we're doing things. CalOptima is the one handling it really through the healthcare agency, but I think it just is a really good uh example of. Everybody working together, uh, this is one of the few topics, I think, that every superintendent in Orange County can agree upon. Is the need to provide additional mental health support, so I appreciate you pointing out that we're. Head of the game, or I think we're always trying to play catch up unfortunately, um, with uh, mental health in terms of support. Um, and we'll continue to kind of grow in that area, but there may be additional opportunities here, and uh, whether we get to benefit as a school district. Um, I think as an educator, all students need to benefit from this as much as possible, so. Um, happy to spearhead something, even though we're so small, most districts have high schools bigger than we have as a district, but. If I can be involved with that, I think it continues to push our, the charge forward and keep it focused on, on our students, so. I appreciate your uh willingness to let me be a part of that stuff. We, I did meet with Supervisor Foley, um, and we both did, actually, um, and uh. She has got some plans, so we're, we're gonna continue to have some conversations around mental health. Yeah, very much so, very knowledgeable, very knowledgeable about what's going on at the healthcare agency, they've had some new people come on to the healthcare agency. Um, uh, some retirements in the mental health side of the house, um, so we've uh, really, they're. Really redoing their mental health plan, kind of writing out the last bit of the bad. But it was bad, the old, it was bad, let's just be honest, um. The, the antiquated um portions of the old three-year plan, and um, we're working hand in hand with them. Um, our meeting tomorrow actually is gonna be focused on that as well, with SB HIP kind of finishing that out, and then talking about what are the things that we have. Um, planned, um, and what uh additional dollars we can start seeing in mental health uh for all the students in Orange County, so. Uh, it is exciting to be a part of that, um, and Supervisor Foley is definitely, um, you know. Uh, invested and wanting to support school districts and make sure that we have the support and services that we need, even if it comes directly. From their coffers, so. It's a good thing.
Jason doesn't want to tell you, but he's on a very short VIP list for tomorrow to join. At Irvine Valley College, where President Biden will be speaking, and the college called today with a very short um invitation, brief. Short. Today asking if he was possibly able to attend with no other designate for the district being invited if he could not attend, so. Um, Jason has rearranged his schedule and will be attending Irvine Valley College tomorrow, and I think that's a pretty big honor.
Great.
It's a huge honor. It should be awesome. It's very exciting, that's why he's been over here, just all excited. Thank you for supporting all students, not, anyway, I mean, all students, I mean. All students. Everyone, you can impact, so we all appreciate it. So uh seventeen A, next regular meeting, uh, scheduled meeting will be held in person here at Thurston Library, Thursday, October twenty seventh. And it'll be a study session, and the seventeen B, Mamet Motion to Adjourn. Hmm, yes. Mamet Motion to Adjourn, I am moved to adjourn, may I have a second? Awesome. Um, all in, oh. Would you like to adjourn, Nick? Okay, yes, all in favor? Okay. Passes five zero, and the time is eight thirty three.